Welcome to tonight, to tonight's meeting. We will begin by taking a look at the agenda. Any comments on the agenda? Otherwise, we are ready for a motion already.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Let's go ahead and vote on that, shall we? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same?
Motion.
Motion passes. Okay, we're gonna pass the mic to Jamie for a while, while I get my stuff together. Would you tell us about the Bridges preschool and the presentation for the curriculum adoption, please?
The Bridges preschool team completed letters training, which is the science of reading training during the 23-24 school year. The current curriculum is 10 years old that they are using, and it doesn't align with the current research and practices. The preschool team has gone through a curriculum adoption process, viewing several curricula written for three and four-year-old programs. Tonight, they will share their findings and make a recommendation for the next preschool curriculum. Please welcome to the podium Victoria, Angie, and Natalie. Thank you for coming tonight, ladies.
Do I have to keep pushing it? Oh, okay, okay. Hello. Hi. My name is Victoria Patterson. I'm the threes teacher. This is Angie and Natalie. Fours teachers. And we're gonna talk to you about our new curriculum. So, thank you. We are requesting to adopt the Frog Street preschool and Frog Street pre-K curriculums with full implementation in the fall of 2025, 2026. So, the Frog Street preschool would be the threes program, and then the Frog Street pre-K would be the fours program. Sorry, I'm not standing close enough. Not tall. So, we currently have Scholastic Big Day for pre-K, and that one was adopted in the 2017-2018 school year. Scholastic has discontinued this curriculum, and the online resources are no longer available to us. And then, the Big Day curriculum also didn't have a threes curriculum, so it was just a fours curriculum. So, I had it, I had to modify the curriculum to fit my standards, and then they also had to modify to fit the students' needs. So, we wanted to take a curriculum that took into account the science of reading that we got from our letters training, and we also felt that there are better programs out there that match the needs of today's learners.
So, when we started the process, we knew that due to the voluntary pre-K and the parent-aware requirements, and these are programs that we receive funding for, we had to use a curriculum off of their approved list. So, that's linked there if you wanna look, but it's a multi-page thing. So, we started the process last summer, just kinda reviewing the curriculum on that list, kinda weeding out ones that wouldn't work, cuz there's some on there that are more for like a in-home daycare or a childcare center. And so, we just kinda weeded out for that, and then we decided to look into and research about four of them in more detail. And so, then, once we looked that, looked into those and got some more information, dug deeper into the websites, talked to people from those curriculums, we narrowed it down to two, and requested some resources. We met with reps from them, from those two curriculums. So, it was the Frog Street, and then we did the Investigator Club was the other one. And so, we dug into both curriculums. We tested out some of the lessons from the curriculum. And then, we selected Frog Street, thinking that that would kinda meet our standards the best and match the rigor that we've already been teaching our preschoolers already. So, some of the highlights from this Frog Street is it incorporates the early brain development research that is out there already. It does have a separate threes curriculum that meets their specific, their unique needs, but then also kinda prepares them and just flows right into the fours curriculum the next year. When we were looking at it, it really reflects the information from our letters training, working on those areas that research shows are most important for developing those early literacy skills. And another big one we really liked is the conscious discipline is embedded into this curriculum. So, they've worked with Becky Bailey, the creator of the conscious discipline, and have paired this, so it's very unique to this curriculum. And the conscious discipline creates a positive environment where children begin to learn how to solve conflict, manage emotions, and take responsibility for their actions. So, that social-emotional piece has really hit hard and just an embedded part of the day. So, we really liked that part, thinking that would really hit some needs that we are seeing in our kids right now.
Here, we just broke down the expense per classroom, along with the shipping costs that were there. We also have linked the, the quote that we were given is also linked on this slide. Lastly, we just wanna thank you guys for considering the request for a new preschool curriculum that will help us better prepare our youngest learners for a bright future. Do you have any questions for us?
Are these cost an annual, or how is the breakdown of that?
Great question. Oh yeah, that's apparently a me question. This is our all-in price. This is one time. Yep, we don't need an annual subscription. This is it. Which we absolutely liked about this curriculum as well.
Another highlight is it has a lot of like the resources, like manipulatives, the books, and everything that we're gonna use already in it. There's some nice resources, some like little magnetic, like storyboard-type things or flip books that tell stories at different levels. So, there's a lot of neat pieces that also come with this curriculum.
Which that translates into cost savings, because we're not buying a bunch of extra stuff to go with it.
You were talking about how it flows from the three-year-olds to the four-year-olds. Does it also flow then into kindergarten? Is it easy, or is it something that is easily adapted into the next level?
I would say that it probably will, it aligns with the standards of threes, fours, and then, since it aligns with the four-year-old standards, it will also align with the kindergarten standards in the future.
Any other questions? Well, thank you. That was very informative, and I love the PowerPoint. Definitely, definitely. Oh, it's so nice. Thank you. And not only cool and cute, but very well put together. If I need to reference something, I know exactly where to look. So, I appreciate that. Thank you. That was informational. So, if you come up with any questions between now and next time, please seek them out. Next, we get another informational piece on the K-4 literacy curriculum. Mrs. Frank?
The elementary teachers have participated in the science of reading training throughout the past two years. They're just about done, and they can see the end in sight, so that's exciting. This has given them knowledge of current research-based defective literacy instruction. Our current reading curriculum is 10 years old. We were just talking that we adopted that in 2015. So, it's exactly 10 years old, and it is time to replace it, because we, when we know better, we do better, right? Mr. Barfink has led a team of educators through an extensive curriculum review process. They've piloted several curricula, visited districts to observe lessons, and made a decision that they will present to you tonight. So, please welcome to the podium Brené Green, our second grade teacher, and Ashley Schmidt, our assessment coordinator. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you. So, as Jamie mentioned, we have been looking at a new reading curriculum. Our current curriculum is about 10 years old. So, it's time to update and, and see what we can find. Last year, our group was formed with representatives from each grade level, special ed, and EL. So, through our work, we know that instructional materials make a difference for our kids, and what we choose matters. So, research shows that students learn primarily through their interactions with their teachers and that content. So, when we were looking at curriculum, we took into account, we knew that it, we wanted it to be science of reading-aligned. That's what our letters training has been all about, so we wanted to make sure that it aligned with that. We wanna make sure that it aligns with our standards, cuz we're getting new ELA standards. And so, making sure that this new curriculum is aligning with those as well. We really wanted to have those digital resources and be, have it be accessible. So, if we wanted to print stuff off, we would be able to do that easily. We wanted to have meaningful differentiation. We have EL students, we have special ed students. So, we wanted to be able to have our general ed teachers have access to differentiation for them, as well as having our EL and SPED teachers have that access to that curriculum. And then, we wanted it to be inclusive and culturally responsive as well. So, the science of reading, I know Ms. Perrington was here last month, and I think she also displayed a similar picture of Scarborough, Scarborough's rope. And what this tells us is that reading is a complex process. It's not naturally done. The science of reading is a research-based approach that emphasizes how children best learn to read, focusing on word recognition and language comprehension, which you can see on the strands there. When we weave all of those strands together, we get a skilled reader. So, learn, learning to read is a complex process. Like I said, it's, it can and must be taught. Background knowledge is a very critical component to that, as well as the decoding skills. We can't just have one without the other. We need to have both of them, so that students are able to become a skilled reader. Foundational skills instruction must be systematic and explicit, and they have to begin with sounds. If our students don't know letter sounds, they're not gonna be able to learn how to read. Instruction needs to be engaging. We need to have that hands-on approach. It needs to be sensory. It needs to just have different components, so that all of our learners can learn. Science-based instruction needs, reduces the need for intervention and allows children to move forward. Science-based reading instruction is a matter of equity, and science-based reading instruction is urgent and the most crucial work of our elementary teachers. If we don't have those foundational skills at the elementary level, it's gonna get harder and harder as kids get into middle school, high school, and so on. So, we need to make sure that our students are able to read. I do have a short clip. Hopefully, it works, just to talk about the prior knowledge and why we need that.
This idea that skills and strategies are more important than building kids substantive knowledge in the elementary years. The assumption has been that this is the way to boost scores on reading tests. And so, what you've got is a real marginalization of anything but reading and math from the curriculum. But if you look at what cognitive scientists know about how reading comprehension works, what's really crucial is how much relevant knowledge the reader has to the text. So, it's not that you can never ask a student, "What's the main idea of this passage?" or "Can you make an inference?" It's a question of what's put in the foreground. There was a famous study called the baseball study, which took a bunch of seventh and eighth graders, and the idea was to see what is more important to reading comprehension. Is it general skill, or is it knowledge of the topic? They divided these kids into four groups, depending on how well they had done on a standardized reading comprehension test and how much they knew about baseball. They gave them a passage to read about baseball and tested their comprehension of that passage, and they discovered that what really made the difference was knowledge of baseball. And even the quote-unquote "poor readers," who knew a lot about baseball, scored significantly better than the quote-unquote "good readers," who did not know about baseball. So, knowledge is like Velcro. Kids who start out with more knowledge and vocabulary are in a better position to then absorb and retain even more knowledge and vocabulary, because they have a context. They have that other half of the Velcro. And that enables them in turn to read more complex text. But the other kids are falling farther and farther behind every year. They're reading simpler text, and they're also less likely to be able to retain it, cuz they don't have that other half of the Velcro. So, what happens is that these gaps grow larger as time goes by. Kids get to high school, and suddenly, they're expected to read a textbook on world history, and they, they just don't have the background knowledge. And it's not that they can't learn those things. It's that they have never been taught those things in a way that's like hypnotistic, and it puts them at a tremendous disadvantage. So, if you can start narrowing that gap earlier, if you start building knowledge in elementary school, you're gonna get a lot more bang for your buck.
So, that was Natalie Wexler, and she's just a well-known person in the science of reading. She's written some books, and it, it ties into that knowledge gap of if the students aren't able to have that knowledge, they're not gonna be able to continue to be a skilled reader. So, as we're looking at curriculum, how do we know if it's science of reading-based? So, some of the, these are like the five shifts for science of reading instruction. So, using decodable readers and not leveled readers. So, that's what we've been using for many, many years, is a student is reading at Level C, and they really should be reading at a level M. So, just more of those decodable readers to say, "These are the skills that they know, and these are the skills they're working towards." Providing students with dedicated phonics instruction, not mini lessons. Helping students with phonics-based scaffolds, not the three-queuing or word guessing. Teach content, not isolated comprehension strategies. So, just continuing to learn on those strategies, not just in one three-week unit, but throughout all of the units throughout the year. And then, following a clear instructional path and not a choose-your-own-adventure model.
Okay, so here, it shows some of the curriculum options that we considered. There was EL Open Up, which we pretty quickly kind of said that it didn't have exactly what we wanted. Then, we were looking at Wit and Wisdom. That just had the knowledge component. It didn't have the skills component. So, then, we were looking at Foundations, which is through U of M, and the UFLI Phonics program that we've been using this year. We felt like we've already needed to get into more science of reading with our curriculum we have right now. So, we've been using UFLI this year and really like that. And then, we checked out CKLA, which is through Amplify. And so, CKLA is all-inclusive. It has the knowledge component and the skills component. So, we were looking at if we're gonna use just the knowledge and keep our UFLI and try to find other skills, or if we should use the whole thing. And we narrowed it down. We looked at Wit and Wisdom for knowledge and keeping UFLI. And then, we would have to also find then like grammar and writing and things like that on our own, like we do now. Or if we went with CKLA and have everything that's well-integrated, cuz it's all through one program. So, we talked to the representatives from them, and we also went to visit Wit and Wisdom and St. James, and then CKLA in Redwood Falls. And so, we decided CKLA was our, it was a pretty clear choice for us, that that was the best, the strongest program. And so, this slide shows that Scarborough's rope again. And on the left side, you'll see K through 2, where the rope is much looser. You're really focusing on all of the skills that you need for language comprehension. So, there's a 60-minute block each day where they're working on that, and then, a 60-minute block where they're working on the word recognition. So, your phonemic awareness every day, your phonics, sight words, all of those things. And then, you move along the rope, and on the right side, you get to where it's, it's starting to weave, and things are becoming more automatic. They have a bigger base of what they know, and you're getting to third grade. They also have the same amount of time allotted. It's 120 minutes a day, but it's all more integrated, so they don't have a separate knowledge and skills time. It's all at one, one big chunk together. And then, fourth grade, they are a 90-minute block, and it's all very integrated. It was kind of interesting to see, when we went to Redwood Falls, the fourth grade, they have, their books are more, it's starting to transition them to middle school, so they had kinda more of these journals and kinda made it more fun for the kids and was getting them ready for the older, older schools. So, so we really, really liked that. So, then, it shows the, what we liked about, what we saw in Wit and Wisdom and what we saw in CKLA to compare them. So, like we said, Wit and Wisdom was just the knowledge component. It did have very strong discussion questions. There was writing throughout it. The teacher's manual was very thorough. We wouldn't say it was very user-friendly, though. And it does align with our standards. CKLA, though, it was comprehensive. I really liked seeing how the vocabulary instruction, how they teach vocabulary, and all their questioning throughout the lesson, and how they're showing even the different levels of your questioning that we always focus on. It's very kid-friendly. It's interactive. As a teacher, I really like how it's laid out for me, and the kids were really engaged when we tried it in our classroom. And I really like it. It engages them in like the science, the social studies, the literacy knowledge that they need to be building a base on, so that as they're getting older, you know, we, we know those things. And the assessments are included. It does have online assessments as well. If you choose to do it that way, it will quickly for you grade according to standard. It'll weed out the different questions and sort them by standard, so that can help you make decisions for your whole group instruction. Your, like our Eagle time, when we have our interventions or small group in your room. And then, and we said it aligns well with our community values. We liked the knowledge that it was teaching, and it also aligns with our standards. And this slide, the next two slides show, they, with their knowledge, it's very connected through the years. So, it's, it does show pre-K. We would be adopting kindergarten through fourth grade. But it shows science connections, history connections, and literature connections. So, what they're learning, they will build upon, and it's pretty amazing, just talking to the other district, how they retain. They'll learn something in first grade, and they will go in-depth knowledge with it, and then, they will know it, and they keep reviewing the course, and then, they build upon that each year. So, you know, you can see like, if you would follow along and watch, you could see how like went through American history and different things like that, so.
All right. So, Ms. Perrington was here last month and raved about UFLI, and I have used UFLI. I love UFLI. Our teachers love UFLI. So, what does this look like moving forward? We wanna continue to use UFLI. We don't wanna, we don't wanna take that away. So, some things that we're gonna do to continue to use UFLI in addition to CKLA is not gonna change a whole lot from what we're doing this year. Our special ed teachers, our EL teachers, our intervention teachers are gonna continue to use UFLI with their small groups. During Eagle time, will be, our teachers will be able to, they've done like different assessments and screeners to see where kids are at with their skills, so they can break them apart and really focus on, okay, this group of kids needs this, and this teacher is gonna teach it. This group of kids needs this, and this teacher. So, we can really dive in and try and close some of those gaps that, that we're missing. So, we're still planning to use UFLI next year, because we've seen such great success with it. We don't want it to go away. And then, professional development. So, initial training is about six hours, which we have five in-service days next year, so this will be great timing for that. And then, throughout the year, they call them strengthen and focus times, and it's strengthen is like three hours, so we could do that on one of like our professional development days during the year. And then, that focus hour is just additional support as needed. All right. I'm gonna let Cory take over the cost.
Yep, and this one's me. So, on this slide, you see what, what is included with the cost. And this is a six-year all-in thing. That is our teacher licenses with the digital access, student licenses for all the online materials, classroom kits. These classroom kits also come with all the materials we need. So, say, for instance, in fourth grade, they started getting into novel studies. They have like the mixed-up files of Ms. Basil E. Frankweiler and Treasure Island. All those novels are included. We don't have to buy those separately. We have skills workbooks. We have, yep, the decodables and the novel studies. All this professional development that you just heard, and shipping and handling. So, but, so this is all in for six years. It's everything we need for the six years. Of course, we're hoping to have this for more than six years. So, you know, at the end of the six years, we'll have, there'll be some parts that we'll have to re-up, and it'll be mostly the online components and buying some of the consumables. But that will be a smaller part of the entire budget. And I believe, included in a board packet, there was a cost breakdown, if you wanted to see that too. Yeah, there that is. So, it breaks it down by grade. We're actually getting, they're giving us a lot of free stuff. So, it's really, they were very generous on a number of these items. Yeah, $102,000 of discounts. So, that's nice. So, we would just like to end with this little phrase at the end here, which is from Amplify, the creators of CKLA. Watching students learn to read is magic, but knowing how they do it is science. And that's what we really loved about this, is that it really breaks down how kids learn how to read and how they, you know, it incorporates the science of reading and makes them actually do it, and we loved it. Any questions?
I'm assuming majority of the teachers were all on the same page with us as well. Okay.
It's hard to think of any questions. That was an amazing presentation. I wanna go get a book on a Scarborough rope. That's really interesting. And digging in and just... And digging in and just up in our game after distance learning, this looks like this is really going to cover some ground. Is this an extra-cost type of program? Is this kind of the Cadillac or is that pricing-wise kind of in the midst?
I can tell you that this was... So when we were looking at just wit and wisdom and we tried separating out the knowledge and the skills part on this one, this was considerably cheaper than wit and wisdom just for that portion. So I would say altogether, like it's pretty affordable.
Fantastic.
And they just, they just came out with their newest version now in January, so we'll be getting the very newest one, so.
They've made some changes and one of the biggest changes that is the writing piece in it. And it's more integrated into the skills piece. So that'll be really exciting to see how it continues to build and helps our students become better writers as well.
Can you talk about who was on the curriculum adoption committee? Like who were your representatives?
So we had in kindergarten Megan Lindquist. First grade was Eliza Rogatsky. Second grade was Renee. Third grade Miranda Nessith. Fourth grade Shauna Rogatsky. EL was Melissa Dartis. And then special ed was Erin Perrington and myself. So we had a really good group of people and we were able to get out and see a lot of different things, so.
I was glad to see that you were keeping UFLY in there somewhere. That was going to be one of my questions. And then the screen chain, you know, came up because we were pretty impressed with that program as well. So I was very happy to hear that, so.
I would say this program seems to be very similar, you know, it's very science of reading as well. And so I'm excited to see how theirs works too. It was fun to see it in Redwood Falls.
Thank you both and the whole staff for all your work on it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we're very confident that we have been presented with the best information. Thank you for conveying all you learned through that. I appreciate it very much. We appreciate it very much. Okay, next up is another informational piece to review the 2025-26 SWWC contract. Mrs. Frank.
Okay, your SWWC contract is in your board packet. It always comes out about this time of the year. It is due by April 1st, so we'll go ahead and just review it tonight and then approve it at the next meeting so that you have some time to look through it. On the first page, you'll just see typical small increases like they do every year. So I'm going to go straight to the second page. On the second page, you'll see all of our special ed services that we get from the co-op. And remember, this is all based on the students that we have at the time. So you know, it's going to change from year to year as to, you know, how many minutes a particular student might need a deaf and hard-of-hearing teacher available, you know, those kinds of things. So the second column or the last column, I guess, would be the predictions for next year. That will be what we contract for our services. You'll notice overall, they do go up a little bit. But we kind of expect that as well. All right, if you keep scrolling down, I am going to point out the mental health services. So this is a grant that we get from REMIC every year for Rachel Raverty's mental health services. She typically works with groups of students promoting social skills and teaching them how to be a good friend and do school and all of those things. So we are going to decrease her time from a .75 FTE to a .5 FTE after I reviewed her contract and spoke with the, or reviewed her schedule and spoke with the LCEL staff. We felt strongly that we could go back to a .5 FTE. So I do have a REMIC grant ready to roll. So we're not going to sign this contract until REMIC approves the grant though. Okay? All right. Any other questions around the contract?
The services that are provided, is that kind of like a base, looking at the projections? Or are there some that transition in with a need?
So that is just looking at our current students that we have right now, looking through IEPs and just seeing what kind of services they'll need next year. So we kind of roll this year's students forward to next year.
Any other questions for Mrs. Frank? Okay. Otherwise, you have until next meeting if you continue to review this and have any questions. Another informational piece, we are going to review the summary of our student activity accounts. Mrs. Pepper.
Thank you very much. Included in your packet is our activity accounts, financials. Required by auditor every year is it must be received and reviewed by the board. We bring a summary statements. It receives disbursements and balances for each student activity count. Now remember, student activity counts are accounts raised by the students to be used for the students. So there's a whole, they call it a MAFA manual that lists all the rules that student accounting must follow. You know, it still follows our UFRS manual, but with a few slight changes because there's a few things that they can't ever pay any coaches or any people to do anything. It's mostly buying the extra things for our students for them to succeed in their classroom or in their activities. So a lot of our extracurriculars have their things as you see through that and everything like that. So you just need to review it once a year. The information in here is as of 12/31. So you can see, and I'm going to point out when you looked at it, you know, you look at red and you think at red, that you automatically think that red is bad. But how our financial statements work is, in this case, red is good. Don't ask me why. But so you will see that it's broken down by the activity and how much it is. So we're just going to look at the first one here. 902 is our winter play. And so on their account, as of the 31st of December, was over $9,000. And so you could be able to go through the whole list and take a look. I'm not going to go through each one. And one thing you always have to realize is that this money is never allowed to go negative. They can never spend more than what they have. Pretty easy, so. Are there any questions on that?
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Pepper? All right, thank you for the update. We'll move on to item eight. We'll take some action to, we'll take action on this next item. We're going to review the health insurance rates for effective July 21 with BCBS. Again, Mrs. Pepper.
All right. We have an insurance committee here at the school district. And it's made up by a variety of all our groups or all our teams, all our different unions. And we received our renewal rate already for July 1st renewal. If you can remember, last year, we made the move from the Southwest West Central Service Corps of Pool, which is called the Minnesota Health Care Consortium. And we moved to a self-fully insured Blue Cross Blue Shield plan because it came with a lower rate. With that move, we were guaranteed a rate cap of 12.5% for the second year that will start in July 1st, 2025. We got the renewal earlier this year. Lots of times you see this end of March, beginning of April. So this is good timing because the insurance committee that Mr. Joyce is on, Jamie, myself, so they can talk to this if there's anything I miss. We got the renewal early this year, which is good. And we were able to review that with Paul Peterson, our health insurance agent. And we discussed other options, things like that. But what it did is it came in with a rate of an 8% increase, which is even lower than that rate cap. So we thought that was good. But once again, we still had other discussions on if there's other things we should be doing, looking at, plan design changes, things like that. But it was the consensus of the insurance committee that we would like the board to accept the renewal rate increase of 8%. Next year, if you remember, is every two years, we have to go out to HEDA, which is a Health Insurance Transparency and Accountability Act. So next year is the year. We didn't, we could do it this year if we wanted to. But we decided with this only 8% increase, we thought it was the best interest to approve that. I did list in the packet as well as what the, oh, let me get to it here, what the actual rate sheet is. As you can tell at the top, it's a rate change of 8%. There's a few, we have different plans and it's an aggregate value because some of the plans are a little bit higher, a couple were a bit lower, so about 8% is the overall. So I will, Mr. Joyce or Jamie, if there's anything I missed, please feel free to. But we're asking to this so that we can go ahead and get it signed and get information from Blue Cross Blue Shield so that we can start our open enrollment period hopefully by the middle of April. And that way, it'll give our employees about two weeks to make decisions on what they want to do with their health insurance for July 1st. Any questions?
Excellent. Well put together. 8% is better than 12. And I like how you pointed out what the rate increases have been over the last few years. That's what those numbers are, right? So that's a departure.
Yeah, it's interesting. We've had some large increases, for lack of a better word, and it's all based on usage. I mean, that's what they look at. It's a numbers game. That's what they look at. That's what their underwriting does and so.
Okay, let's start to see if there's interest for this. Does anyone want to move this forward?
Move approval?
Okay, great. Motion and a second. Any discussion, questions? Great. If not, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same? Motion passes. And that's all for this evening. Meeting is adjourned.